See, I had a great time.
We had a great. Thanks for helping my friend.
Oh, Ryan's, uh, I'm thinking about.
Yeah, it's only a matter of two minutes.
You guys know Paul Richard or not here? It's just me. I am unsupervised. So bear warning.
See this TV just got off over there. Chief had heard about it like you shouldn't. Just talked to the city manager. Council aware of it, city manager's aware of it, talking about it, but I don't, I don't think. They're, they're well aware of it and they're not, not gonna let it go unchecked. Now will it be 20% of our board? Probably not because that really jacked that department. It looks great on the service. It creates no problem with that. Now, so they don't have lieutenant. They have full sergeant and captain. So now all of their sergeants are making more than the captain. I, I agree. Yeah, because they just stopped. All, all of them. Brooke Haven, I'm not. For you. Brooke Haven stuff. I said from the beginning. They had another one inside. Their attitude. People were taking $20,000. But he said, you know, there's no fact. Funny in and of itself. So, uh, we're not worried about Brooke Haven. Decided to go there. Just like everybody else. So we said we went there and got run off. Yeah, and you're getting COVID tested twice a week and then you get back. Even after where. You even have to wear your mask or. By yourself. Should move. The, uh. The HR director said that he can't force everybody to vaccine. Said that in the department. That's the type of agency, city prevention. People even made it. Possibly. So the other part of, uh, what the chief released. He, on the 28th of this month, they're going to vote in. The 2021 budget agenda and the 20, the full 2022 budget. And they'll vote in half of 21 and the rest of all of them. Uh, in 22, the longevity bonus is in there, $200, $200. Voting the longevity bonus.
Here's good.
Yeah. Uh, so that's in there for next year. 4% pay raise will be retroactive back to October 1st. Everybody probably first paycheck in November. Retroactive your pay raise back October 1st. So you get that. In January 1st. Uh, they originally had written up 4% pay raise, but the budget added another percent, 2% payroll. That wasn't the chief. So January 1st, we get 3% pay raise and then you hiring comes out with paying. Hard to pay with no experience and no certification. There's almost 47. If you're a service, you have 3%. In February, 3%. All the way out to the city. So your team call. Doubt as well. So what do you give once that group comes out? It's on everybody's pay, every single rate. And they compare to that hiring. All below which we hired in at right now is being adjusted to. So they're not gonna hire anybody in to make it more than 2%. With the tuition. And if sergeants, uh, promotion, now we'll 10%. Face of all work.
Yeah, if I had that.
Move it. So, yeah, so all the sergeants are gonna get adjusted too because. Way the math works out. They promote some of our more veteran pro officers who are at point. They're gonna be motivated for the sergeant on the road. The math, the sergeant. So that if you. All that. So each, some of you guys may get a pay raise. Uh, some of you may get, how many years did you have? Seven, but we only paid you up to five, right? Because that was our maximum risk. Well, you're gonna get it. So my understanding is those that should be hired, that we've only. Five years. And you take. You should be getting, that's my understanding. Now, there's a long time. People leave in there. That's my understanding. Some will get adjusted, some will get big pay adjustments, some will get smaller. You said the average pay adjustment for officers, five. Yeah. I don't know how that works out. So we've got. Another certified guy that started Monday. Hubenhausen.
Come on, buddy. Time to go.
So there's a couple more in the pipeline. When some of our math. So with that, uh. Sergeant staff back up. Our proactivity department is pretty much at its core. Know why that is, like manpower and it's designated to all. To get out sick with COVID stuff, that's due to COVID, uh, pay rate people. Don't know that. Problem is now our call volume is reflecting. Nations getting slaughtered, we call. A lot of crimes are calling up. 300%. I listen, we got Saturday night, we got pretty small, we got nine Saturday night calls. So. We've got to really ramp up the proactive. Only known way to curb criminal activity is what? Proactive police. Every research study out there says the only thing to curb criminal activity is focused proactive. Standard riding around and dog patrolling something. Every research study says that's a waste of time. Focus proactive. Get out, stop suspicious people, stop cars, uh, turning blue lights on in there. Five reasons they contact people. Even if you're just getting out saying, hey, birds who are watching it think you're getting out called here. Without giving out the tip. Five reasons to get out, talk to people, find reasons, get cars pulled over, talk to them. The van being stolen on PIV or backup again to pretty much see a van coming out of an apartment complex. I put my paycheck on and maybe stole. Find reason to pull it over. Find a reason. Now be proactive.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order, please. We'll do a roll call. Madeline. We have a, a quorum. Ryan, Tara, myself and Claire. So we barely have a quorum. Uh, minutes, I was not at the previous meeting, but the approval of the minutes from September 2nd. Anybody have a motion or a comment?
I move to approve the minutes from the. Whatever month this is, the September meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Minutes from the September meeting are passed. There are no organizational procedural items this evening that I'm aware of. Uh, or any unfinished business, so I will re-go ahead and read the zoning board of appeals preamble. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists. An undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with the variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance or assigned ordinance. And development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is rendered. With that, we'll go on to new business. Case number one. ZVA 21-23, 4994 Shallow Glen Court. The homeowner, Kamalyn Duran, seeks the following variance from chapter 27, section 58. To allow an encroachment of seven feet into the side setback and a second variance from chapter 27, section 58. To increase the maximum lot coverage from 40 to 41% to allow the construction of a detached garage. Staff, will you give your synopsis of this, please?
Um, just a quick note, because we do just barely have a quorum. For the majority vote, it'll have to be three out of four. So just be aware of that. If it comes down to a two to two, it, the motion fails and so you'd have to make another motion and see if that one succeeds, so.
Great, thanks.
Let's be aware. So the first case on the agenda is ZVA 21-23. The applicant is requesting two variances. One to allow encroachment into the side setback and the second to allow an increase in their maximum lot coverage. These are the existing conditions. This is the. So sorry. Is that better? Thank you. Sorry about that, everybody. So these are the existing conditions. You can see that the house has an existing two car garage at the end of the driveway. That's where the applicant is proposing to construct their detached garage. This is the site plan, or excuse me, the survey. You can see that most of their buildable area is currently utilized. The applicant is proposing to construct a two car garage. It would be three feet from the side yards, uh, from the side property line. And it would also require an increase in the impervious surface. By approximately 1%. So. The property is 15,000 square feet and 104 feet wide. This meets the minimum standards for the R-100 zoning district. The minimum standards are 15,000 square feet and 100 feet wide for that zoning district. And they also, you know, in this neighborhood have, uh, very similar lots in terms of lot size and lot shape. They're all very similar. Staff doesn't also see any restrictive topography or restrictive orientation of the house. A lot, most of the homes in this neighborhood, if not all, could not accommodate this type of improvement. And it doesn't appear that any other property has an additional garage. It looks like most of them also have the same situation where it's a two car garage. So for that reason, staff really feels like this would actually be granting a special privilege in this case. Again, because it's not typical and most of these lots couldn't accommodate this type of change. Staff just really feels like they've utilized the property. To the extent that it was intended for. So we do recommend denial. However, if you do choose to approve the variance, we just recommend these two variance criteria. I'm available if you all have any questions and I'm also just going to pull up the applicant's presentation that they've prepared for you.
Great, thanks, Madeline. The applicant care to address the, uh, the board at the podium? Just state your name and address for us, please, for the record.
My name is Chris German, uh, and we live at 4994 Shadow Glen Court. And would I, I absolutely want to address the board because this is something I've been thinking about and dreaming about since I moved into the house back in 2011. So, um, I do have a letter from one of our neighbors in support of the project. May I pass that out?
Certainly.
Bruce and, Bruce and Carol. Just got back from traveling, uh, through our verbal conversations with Bruce and Carol, who are on the side that affects the setback. They do indeed support the project, but they have, they decided for COVID reasons, they did not want to be here. We have also reviewed the, the plans and our methodology with our rear neighbors who are the Arnats and the Borns. And they verbally have told us they don't have any objection to our plan. So. I'm excited to talk about our plan. I understand the, the response from the city. We, we, we understand that, but I still want to go through our plan because I think our plan is the right plan. We want to install a detached two car garage. We've got two young boys who are new drivers and we've got aging parents and my truck will currently not fit in our garage. And that's really saying something because it's a Honda Ridgeline and it's not much of a truck, but it will not fit in my current garage. Our current plan that was submitted that requires the variance minimizes our tree disruption and removal. It minimizes our ground coverage and it adds value to the property that we think reflects both the theme of Shadow Glen and of Dunwood. We recognize that there are alternatives to the, the variance that we could indeed build what we want on the property. We understand that. The struggle with that is it does indeed will force us to add more driveway. We can actually push the proposed garage fur- further back on the property and into the property. Which would require even more concrete to get to that area and adding concrete, adding concrete creates another problem. So when we met with Madeline earlier in the year, which I think was back in May. She said that we needed to minimize those impacts and so what we did is we got with the architect and we pulled that detached garage as far forward as possible. Keeping our driveway to a minimum. We don't want to get into the trees that we, that we planted back in 2013 on the rear of the property. We don't want to bring that garage roof closer to the rear neighbors because our rear neighbors are at a higher elevation. We looked at adding, uh, adding to the garage going back towards deeper to the fence. In, in terms of reusing our existing building and expanding on it. It still creates the same concrete problem because we have to back out because of our side entrance. We would still have to add yet more concrete to accommodate. So we didn't want to do that. And in that case, we can't add a two car garage. We would only be adding, we would only be able to add one. The other idea was to add to the existing garage and rotate the doors. That would add more living space, which would be a window that would be closer to our neighbors and it would require a driveway which would go over our sinkhole. So we live in a neighborhood that has the construction materials burial pit in the front yard. And we certainly, for pun intended, I don't want to get into that bag of words. The other thing about moving it to the front of the building would require a lot, a few large trees to be removed and we would have to remediate the pit that's in front. So the variance, from our standpoint, the building is investment and we do not want to build it short. We want to build what we thought is the absolute proper. Detached garage we could on our property. The two variances that we requested allows us to minimize our ground coverage at this location. The variance allows to keep our rear line of trees that we put in to have privacy between us and our neighbors. The variance keeps us with the proposed architectural plan of our neighborhood and with, and with Dunwoodie. And the various keeps, it keeps us in the themes of Dunwoodie's traditional five, four and a door layout. The side setback is essential to the, as we think is essential to the bill. But it certainly would not prevent us from doing it. And the ground coverage variance of 0.09, 0.9% allows us not to dig up anything that was previously installed before we moved in. So to show we, we've, I've had years and years and years to put together a plan for the garage. So we took, we took cues from other houses in Dunwoodie. Here's a house on, on Durant Drive. They've got a detached garage and they've actually got living space. We are not pursuing any living space over, over our detached garage. Also on Durant Drive is another detached garage and this one I couldn't tell if it was actually detached or not, but again, it fits in with the team of a, of a Dunwoodie five, four and a door. With an adjacent two car garage at the end of the driveway. Here's an, uh, on Vernon Lake Drive, it's again, just like us, a traditional five, four and a door Dunwoodie house. They've built a detached garage, detached garage. This one's actually a double, a double deep, double wide garage. It's quite a large space. This garage was actually the inspiration that we looked to when we laid out our architectural plan for our garage. This is over in Redfield and we think they've done an absolute beautiful job of applying a detached garage. They kept with the theme of the house. They've got the eyebrow over the garage doors. It just looks like it's been there the entire life of the house and that's the methodology that we applied to our architectural plan. There's another one in Redfield. This is another five, four and a door. This one has the garage that's actually pushed back. In their case, they have a rear entry garage, so they already have the concrete pad back there to accommodate the garage. We do not, we would have to add that concrete to push the garage back. And that's what we want to avoid. Another one in Redfield. And there's even more. So we really felt like we were keeping in theme with Dunwoodie and keeping in the theme of the five, four and a door layout with our architectural plan. In an adjoining neighborhood, there's old village run and this is not what we are planning on doing. I believe this, this house had a side setback variance and a rear setback variance and they've got a living space above the garage. That's not our intent. Our intent is just to simply add a small detached garage to, in a, in a completely natural, full flowing location on our lot. So we've talked about the, uh, we've talked about the plan. Here's the architectural rendering which was submitted with, uh, with the variant application. If you look at the picture on the right, you can see the square garage and we can, in theory, push that back. We've got probably eight or nine feet before our rear setback where we could push that back. And move it over to remove from the side setback variance request. The problem is driveway. It's adding more impervious surface and there's remedies to it, but we really don't want to dig up our impervious surface that we currently have. They've been there since we've owned the house. So we are formally requesting that approval of variances. We want to keep, we want to invest in our property in Dunwoodie, which is the reason anyone asks for a variance to begin with, right? They want to improve their own property. We hope that you see our methodology and our attention to detail because we really went back and forth several times with the architect based on your comments to minimize that impact. And just a note about Kamalyn and I, we have been homeowners in DeKalb County since 2001. We used to live in Chambly and we've been in Dunwoodie residence in this particular house since 2011. So our intent is not to build and flip. Our intent is to build and stay. That's all. Do you, does the board have any questions for me?
Well, yeah, we'll get to that in more comment. Thanks. Anyone else, uh, thank you. Uh, anyone else in, uh, want to speak in support of the variance? Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to the variance? All right. If so, now we'll. Open it to the board for questions.
Yeah, so. You had mentioned living space. You're not, you're not intending to use living space above the garage, but one of those last slides there certainly looked like in the architectural drawings. You got a window.
Yes.
Looks like vented space and things like that. I'm just trying to understand, to me, that looks like a disconnect to me. I mean, can you describe that a little better? Intent and, and will and doing are kind of three different things. So I'm trying to understand where you guys are at in the, in the formalization of your plans. As opposed to other options you had mentioned. You know, I never, we never saw other options that were considered, I guess. So I'm just trying to get a little more information there. And I think living space above a garage is actually great. I have one myself, so. Just curious as to why you would or would not do that.
I want to put in an automotive lift in the garage and I, we need storage and I need. I want to put in an automotive lift in the garage and I, we need storage and I need, and I would like storage for my equipment. So that's why we put the, we added the architectural features to the garage. We do not have any intention to put in a bathroom or a living space up there. It is for storage and, and I need the, the dormer heights so I can add a lift.
Okay. Makes sense. You need ceiling space.
I need ceiling.
All right. And so, yeah, and Madeline, this might be a question for you. I mean, I think a lot of this comes down to the interpretation of hardship. And I know that's kind of a gray area. So if you can just kind of expand on, is that typically a matter of interpretation by the city for, in terms of recommendation first now? What, where does that weigh in terms of the criterion for variance approval?
So our code doesn't require hardship. It requires practical difficulty or hardship for zoning variances. My typical thinking when I'm thinking of hardship versus practical difficulty is, is this something that is interfering with the reasonable use of the property? So that's sort of my line of thinking normally. So.
Yeah, that makes sense. So then I'll just call attention to the thing that's probably the most frustrating is use a homeowner's and that's the lot, right? And you know, all those other examples you showed us in the presentation. And just to the naked eye, it looked like they had a lot more square footage to work with. Is that a fair assessment?
On this lot here, they, they're, they are, they are into their side setback and they got into their rear setback. On this one, they appear to be into their side setback. The one on the far left and the one in the middle. Uh, this one is not into its side setback. They've actually got enough space to put a truck beside theirs. Uh, that one, they are not into their side setback. I, I don't have any knowledge of their rear setback. This one appears to be pretty close to the property line, but again, I didn't pull out a tape measure. This one is pretty close to the fence, but I don't know if the fence is on the property line or not. I would just assume that the fence was. This one's actually up against its retaining wall and I don't know if that retaining wall is 10 feet off of this properly aligned, but it's, it's awfully close. From, from our standpoint, the, the main reason we pursued that side variance was so we didn't push it further back.
Okay. So. Got it. Got it.
Um, I have a quick before you, yeah, can I ask them before you leave, Chris? Your rendering and maybe I misunderstand. Can you pull your rendering up, please? Because you show a building behind your new garage. I don't understand it. And maybe I'm, I mean, maybe I misunderstand the drawing. Thank you. So do you see how it looks like it's attaching to a house?
So can I, if I zoom in, can I, it's not a PDF.
No. So it's really the two story, but I don't want to see that. But I want to see your rendering, the rendering of your garage where you show your little window. Right there, the what's, why is there a two story structure behind it? Cause if you're really putting it in your backyard, there should be nothing behind it. Correct?
There is no structure behind. That's the decorative dormer.
No, the behind, at the very back. The roof back. So you, you, you have a garage and then you have a second.
Here, those are window dormers.
Oh, so it's going to not just be an A for, uh, this is, great. It's going to have that. That was so confusing to me. So it's a box with a roof.
It's a box with a roof.
Pitch on the front. How tall is that? The, the structure in the back. So the main structure, the whole structure, the tallest point. Not the pitch, but the wall. Thank you. I thought I'd lost my mind.
Dormer side, yeah. Why don't you explain it? Yeah.
Thank you. That wasn't included in our packet because it wasn't included in city some shore. Thank you.
Staff, any other questions?
It's okay. It's a moot point at this point. Thank you for bringing them. That's perfect. I do have some concerns seeing your drawing now. The way, I don't mean to be so close to my mic. So you just showed me your, the dormers that are me on the side. I understand one side of look into your backyard. The other one's going to look at your neighbor that's now three feet away. Right? The windows in the garage?
Yes. If, if you were in the, if you were in the attic, then yes, you can see out those windows.
Right. I'm just thinking of their visual. I'm just thinking of the neighborhood visual.
So the, from the architectural standpoint, we thought that would actually make the building look better. So they weren't just looking at a rich one. We thought it would provide some decorative feature and the building is further back from their house. So they wouldn't be able to physically see into those second floor windows unless they're actually back in their backyard at the, at that level. Cause our, our building is actually at a lower level than theirs. So we are.
Thank you. A lower elevation than your neighbor. Okay. And then to, just to discuss the, um, impervious surface, cause I know the city brought up, you could do pavers. Having just put in a new driveway, I understand the expense of a driveway more than I care to, but did you look, see any consideration with any of even the how you're going to connect it to your house, making it creative to, to reclaim that one percent?
So that, if you look at our plan, we have, can you see the mouse on the screen? Okay. So it's not share screen. Oh, I've done something horribly wrong. So we have quite a bit of brick pavers in the backyard where you all seeing this. So we would, if you all, if the city does not approve of the variance for two hundred, for the, the impervious surface variance, we would have to carve out about two hundred feet of previously installed concrete and brick. Would we be able to find it? We would probably be able to find it, but I didn't want to, we didn't want to petition without, without asking for the, without asking for that variance. And we understand that when asking for a variance, they are two separate variances. We looked at, could we do a grass section in the driveway? Our drainage actually comes down our driveway. We've seen the drainage, the, the grass driveway. Usually those are on driveways that are at a peak. So they don't have water running across them. Our concern is we have our drains from that side of the house running down that specific driveway. So putting in a grass driveway really isn't going to be pleasant. We would have to start taking out the brickwork that's in the backyard to get that extra two hundred square feet of impervious surface. Or we'd have to dig up the front walkway and put in a permeable front walkway. So they're all our tendencies.
Where are the trees that you were talking about that you didn't want to take out? Because if you attached it.
If we pushed it back. There is a line of trees that goes from north to south along the back fence line that we put in. They are what kind of birds? Arbor, giant arbor bee, they're birds that provide privacy. If we push it back, we don't know whether or not we're going to get into their root system at the back. There's also one large tree, dominant tree in the back corner in the rear and the southwest corner. It's highlighted. Uh, that tree would probably have to come down if we push the building back. And that tree is the main view break from our neighbors on Winter Gateway, the borns. Did I answer your question?
I don't, I don't want to harp on it too much, but I know it's not necessarily living space on that. But it does have to be, I want to understand the, the box part of your roof there and then the pitch. I want to go back to that for a second. So the window in the front that's facing the same direction is the double garage. Is that, that's not necessarily livable space, but that is that going to be used for storage, utility? Okay. And no plumbing. Okay. And then behind it, then it's just open for the lift and any other.
Half of it will be attic, half will be an open ceiling for a lift.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Did you consider just putting in a one car garage?
Yes.
Okay. That's awesome. What? And because you wouldn't have needed a variance for your side setback.
Well, the.
Or your previous.
I don't, we don't want to put in a one car garage because it doesn't fit with the theme of the other five point of door houses. And I'd rather have, I, we would rather have two additional garages for obvious reasons. The other thing is the constructability of a single car garage is not much more of a premium to get the double car garage. So I still got to dig up the same amount of dirt.
Probably couldn't do the lift either, right? And have room for that. So.
Okay. Thanks. I just wanted to clear that. Thank you.
So you know, Ryan raises a good point. There's a very yeah, we can. I was going to ask him. I didn't really have a question. It's kind of amused. So I think, I think we got everything we need. So we will close for public comment for now. And we'll have a discussion.
Thank you.
So, yeah, no, thanks. I just had a question, but then it was kind of morphing into the more discussion. So Ryan's point is right. We're, we're kind of, it's, it's very, very finite as far as what we can approve and what we can't for the most part, right? So I'm having trouble finding the, the hardship or the, the need for variance, right? With the, the five criteria, the six criteria normally it's incumbent on the applicant to be able to prove why there's a, and there's necessary, right? It is very standard five, four and or it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not an atypical lot. Uh, it's comparable in size and shape. There's not, it's not an odd shaped lot. There's not a big drop off. There's not, you know, all the things we typically see that we typically make a, a variance for. I'm having a hard time finding the, the hardship or the variance. It's, doesn't give them a, a special privilege. So I'm still waiting kind of for that. Maybe the board can talk it through and, and see a, a way to, because we always try to obviously work with the applicants as much as we can, but this has to hold up in theory, superior court. If somebody ever contested it. And we have to be able to show that there, there is a, a reason to grant a variance.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I still feel the hardship comment is, is obviously valid, but I still feel like it's kind of the, that one area, like what is a hardship? Cause you could, that can be cut a million different ways. I think there's a, there is a point of discussion to have for the board around the intent and, and kind of the homeowner to do the best with what they can. There is some valid points and I know from friends too about like, there's not really a benefit to doing a one car versus a two car because you're already spending a boatload of money. It costs, costs about these, these three figures, six figures just to do a standard two car garage without whatever special stuff. So. And that's because contractors know Dunwoody and all that good stuff, right? They like to get their money, but I, I think I kind of go back to having this conversation about the lot. The lot is, it's, it's a typical lot of the neighborhood, but I mean, is it really, is it really putting, you know, without any neighbors' concerns or anything like that? It sounds like they check the boxes there. How, how much are we supposed to be hung up on hardship versus not? Because you know, hardship in other cases, it's case by case, right? So I just think that is, that is true to be the focus of the discussion. I just want to have more of that discussion. Right?
Well, one thing that Matt, this Madeline brought up was that it just fits the R one hundred, right? Cause it, it is, it is tight on this lot. It is a tight house. I can't see the front, but you know, it's, but where it's supposed to be. So you, we, maybe we could think in terms of because it's such a tight lot, what would be, if it was just a little bit bigger, what would have been the next zoning? That, you know, would have been the R one fifty? I don't know what's next. If it had been, just so we, at a point of discussion, would the setback have changed if they had a little more square footage in their lot? I don't know. The only thing I'll say about the one versus two car garage is they don't need a variance. They can build all the one cars they want. Except for, because they wouldn't have impervious problems and they wouldn't have, I think they could, I think they'll be able to make up the seven feet difference. I, I would assume.
Sorry. No, you're right. Um, but that could easily be done and not need to be here. I mean.
With a two or a one car?
Two.
As much as they want.
Pushing it back.
Pushing it back.
Back and over to the right.
And so it's one of those situations, like if you're remodeling your house, like I've had a person do where if something you find sucks because the previous owner, whatever the house is old and you got to fix it up accordingly, like dig up old concrete, whatever. It's just on you because it's your house, right? So it's the unfortunate truth. Um, I mean, yeah, I see that. I see that side of it too. Um, I, again, I just kind of go back down to the whole thing. It's the lot that's really hurting them, right? Or just, you know, and, and for what they want to do. It's the lot that's making it biggest change.
They want to do, as Madeline said, can they get the use out of the house? There's a two car garage. There is what they need. But if you're going to put multiple cars and, and different things and in all lifts and things like that, that's elective, right? So that's, that's where the, that's where the rub comes in. It's like, okay, how do we prove that this is really hardship? I'm the, I'm the chair. I, I don't make motions.
Could I ask the homeowner, one more question? Is that okay?
Sure. Anytime, boss.
Um, do, would you mind coming up? All right. Um. I know we didn't talk to your neighbor that's to your left. Whatever direction that is. Cause they didn't, I know they didn't come, but you've spoken to them. They were traveling and so we're, you know, we, we believe you. We honestly believe you. If this variance is denied, do you have a plan B? Um, have you thought through? And, and obviously you can go through the court system, but do you have a plan B for your, for getting your lift and your garage? If, if you can't put it exactly where you currently have it on the plan.
We have certainly not paid to develop a plan B. We, when we spoke to the neighbors, they were in favor of it. They had one caveat that we did not pursue construction on, on Saturday mornings. We do not have a plan B. So if you all deny it, uh, we also recognize that if you all deny it, we are not obligated to keep in accordance with, what we've drawn, we can put in a, we can put in a twenty foot wide building, twenty foot hall with a white membrane roof. And it's our property and we can do what we want. And that's not the direction we want to go. We really feel like we thought out the least amount of impact on our property, the least amount of impact on coverage that give us the space that we want. So.
Cause we have approved a garage similar to this over off North Peachtree in Leisure Lake area. And as it's been built, it takes a lot more space than you think, you know? So, but we, it had a different setback because it was on a main artery, not a, it didn't, but a neighbor. So it's a little different. It didn't have a residential. So we've done it. I mean, we can do it. I mean, are we tying our hands for future development in that neighborhood? I don't know. I don't think so.
No precedent. Each case is different.
Exactly. And you know, someone's got to be the first of something. So.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you, you know, it's kind of a gut check too. I understand they don't have a plan. Some, my biggest thing now at this point is there is no plan B. So that gives me a little bit of a pause as well. But you don't necessarily need to be married to plan and you don't necessarily have to have a plan B. That's also more money, you know, all that good stuff. But I do, you know, it is of my opinion and I may be alone in this, but that they're trying to do the best with what they can for what they want to do. And that's just, I'm going on gut there. So I may be the dissenting opinion there, but you know.
Sure.
We have talked about at length about the ground coverage. And if the, if the side setback is approved and the ground coverage is not approved, we think we can work with that. So we so.
I mean, when we do, it's, it's a good point. I mean, I actually wasn't too concerned about the ground coverage. It's one percent. I mean, I, but well, I mean, please educate me because you know, I'm newer to this than you guys. So. Yeah. Well, give them an inch, take a mile is what you mean. So. Yeah. Well, give them an inch, take a mile is what you mean. So.
Right.
Every construction project has a trickle, and this, in this instance, has its secondary effect. And that's why impervious is important. You know, we had it with the deck, the one we had before. All right. Who's going to make a motion?
Do I have a motion, board?
Fine. I'll make a motion. We'll see how it goes. I move to deny the request for variance from section 2758 to allow for an encroachment into the side setback of seven feet. And to deny the request for variance from section 2758 for an increase in the maximum lock coverage from 40 to 41%.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for denial of both variance requests. Have a vote. All those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Variance is denied. All right. Moving on to the second case, ZBA 21 dash 24. Uh, variance from chapter 16, section 237 to reduce the required minimum driveway spacing. Madeline, would you like to? Give us the background on this one?
Okay. So the next case is ZBA 21 dash 24 for 4537 Chambley Dunwoodie Road. They're requesting to maintain their existing curb cut on Chambley Dunwoodie. These are the existing conditions. This is currently a drive-through fast food restaurant. It's a Burger King. They currently have three curb cuts. Two are on Dunwoodie Park. This is a corner lot. Um, and so these are just two pictures of the existing curb cuts on Dunwoodie Park. And then this is the picture of the curb cut on Chambley Dunwoodie Road. This curb cut is extremely close to the intersection of Dunwoodie Park and Chambley Dunwoodie Road. It is very dangerous at this curb cut to make a left-hand turn. I just thought that was important to note here. This is the proposed plan. They are proposing to construct a new restaurant and demolish the existing one. They will be reconfiguring the parking lot, but they're proposing to essentially keep all of their existing entrances and maintain all those curb cuts. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on this area in general, because I think it's really important to the context of this variance. This is a page out of the Georgetown master plan. This is specifically the circulation and open space frame, framework for the Georgetown master plan. This is a document that underwent truly over a decade of preparation. The general purpose of this plan is to create a safe multimodal environment and particularly to enhance the safety for bikers and pedestrians. The city's actually begun implementation on this project recently. They've started some streetscape improvements on Chambley Dunwoodie. And then as staff in both the community development department and public works department, we've been working on implementing our access management plan. And so basically that means whenever somebody comes to redevelop, we say, okay, are you meeting the standards for driveway spacing? Do you have too many driveways? Are they too close together? Are they dangerous? And whenever we come across a situation where it doesn't meet the standards of that access management plan, we ask them to remove or close a certain curb cut. We've had a recent redevelopment, one street over, excuse me, on North Shallowford. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the old CVS there. They're redeveloping that and they have two entrances and we have asked them to close one of them. So this is something that we've been working on in the area. It's sort of one of those incremental things that we have to do as properties redevelop. Um, and then you can see the star on this plan, just where I've marked where the property is, just to give you context for the area as a whole. And then here's it zoomed in. All of these different dotted lines and things all represent different elements of the plan. So the purple dotted line represents a new, uh, multi, multi-use path. So for bikes and pedestrians. The green dotted line, that represents streetscape improvements. And then you can see that the intersection here at Chambley Dunwoodie and Dunwoodie Park is circled in red. That means that that intersection is going to be updated and enhanced. And then you can see that they've highlighted just north of the intersection and all the way down this part of Chambley Dunwoodie Road. And that wide red dotted line, that's where they've highlighted where implementing the access management plan that I just mentioned, that they've highlighted it in this area. So it is something important to the implementation of the Georgetown master plan. So. Reducing curb cuts, reducing these conflict points are a really important piece, like I said, of this plan overall. Um, and then this is the streetscape concept that they've drawn up. So this is just to give you guys a visual of what it's supposed to look like. They'll have the lanes of travel, but then they'll also have bike lanes, enhanced sidewalks and then landscaping as well. So lots of street trees. So because the access management plan is something that we do in conjunction with public works, I sent out this plan to them for comment on this variance. They don't comment on everyone, just on ones that are applicable to them. And this is coming from Michael Smith, the director of public works. Essentially, um, their stance is that there are an excessive number of driveways on Chambley Dunwoodie. And it is, like I said, a significant concern. Every driveway represents a conflict point. So i.e. a point where cars could clash with one another or with bikers and pedestrians. Um, and essentially the department's conclusion that was that granting the variance would be detrimental to the public welfare. Like I said, this is a problem curb cut and the implementation of our access management plan is very important to both community development and public works. So additionally, staff also finds that it doesn't meet other criteria for approval. We don't feel that the homeowner, or excuse me, that the property owner is being deprived of any rights here. They still have access to the public right of way. You know, our code doesn't guarantee that they have access to certain roads, just that they have access to the right of way. And so, you know, what they have on Dunwoodie Park accomplishes that. Additionally, there are other properties at this intersection. The two properties to the north. Um, at this intersection don't have curb cuts on Chambley Dunwoodie. They have them on the side roads as well. And overall, we, as staff feel that disregarding our access management plan is going to undermine the goals of the Georgetown master plan is. And it's also not consistent with creating a safer environment for drivers and pedestrians. So for these reasons, we do recommend denial of the plan. That's all I have for you guys this evening. If you have any questions, I am available.
I had a quick question. The first picture, you had a blue line. What was that? I'm sorry. Maybe it wasn't the first. It was. Where you had the red lines and, and there was a blue line that also ran through that intersection.
Is it this?
Yes.
Oh, the blue, the blue stands for. Sorry, I'm going to have to look that one up. Um, I think that is another type of sidewalk improvement. There's so many different lines.
In that connectivity to the park. It's the greenway kind of.
Yeah.
Because it's like.
They are planning a future transit station here. Yes. So that's part of the plan.
And Malin, just real quick, what is, uh, it sounds like it could be translated pretty easily in layman's terms. What is the definition of curb cut?
Oh, um, sorry. I feel like I switched around on all of my terms here. Curb cut, driveway, entrance, access point. It just means like a place where you can pull into access property. Sorry. I use them all interchangeably.
Thanks, Madeline. Will the applicant approach the podium and state their case and why the request in the variance?
Hey there. My name is Brian Arnold. I'm with GPS Hospitality. We're the Burger King franchisee. We're a locally owned and operated franchisee. We live in this, live in this and work in this community and we purchased this location a few years ago. And it's overdue for a remodel, as you very well know. And this is a, an owned property. So it's a PK owned property. So it's not like it's a, a lease is running out. I mean, we're going to be there for a very long time. We just don't think it's appropriate to be there under the conditions that it is right now. It's a, it's a very dated site plan. It's from the seventies when, uh, you know, less than 10% of your customer base went through a drive-through. So it's landlocked in a corner, as you saw in the, in the proposal. And we're, uh, we're, we're bringing it to the middle of the property. To get circulation off of the street. And so I think, uh, you know, kind of the practical difficulty here for us is the fact that if it's left. In the back corner, it'll, it'll, it'll stay that way for perpetuity. No one really wants that. Uh, again, the practical difficulty is if we bring it out to the middle of the property and pull traffic off of the streets and circulate into the property. Arguably a safer environment. We think that if we lose this curb cut, again, the practical difficulty is our sales would go away. And so that, that would really be tanking the business for us. So we can't really use the, the property for its best and most intended use. And so the engineers are here. I'm going to let them kind of go through some plan stuff and then I'll wrap up with you.
We are the civil engineers who prepared the variance application. The, so basically, as Brian has explained, so most of the, so a lot of the traffic comes from 285. So it's impulse customers. And this is more business side, but it kind of relates to why we need to keep the curb cut. Predominantly that traffic comes from 285. If it's an impulse customer who, you know, traveling, they don't really know the area. They want easy access. So that write-in is crucial to getting them onto the property. To, you know, for, for basically for sales. And if we don't have that write-in access and they have to go, they'll then stack up at the intersection and they'll have to turn right. And that, you know, they may be, may be able to find that if they're from the area, we may lose the customer. But they do come into the project, then they would have to leave. They'd have to take a left-hand turn on the side street, which, you know, every time you have a left turn, turn, you, you increase the possibility of, you know, impacts and, and more. You have more chances for, for actual car accidents, turning left as opposed to turning right in. And then customers who do want to leave can go back to the interstate, they can go to the signal. Or, or people who are local know to come out right and head north on, on Shinley, on Dunwood, Dunwood. So that's one of the reasons why we feel like the curb cut is essential to, uh, to remain. So we don't cause more impact to, to the signal and, and cause more people to have to, you know, make a lot of different circuitous routes to get to the project. So right now, um, the driveway is where it is currently where we're proposing it. We're trying to just keep it. I'm not trying to move it around. We can't, uh, can't move it any further away from the intersection because then we're too close to the neighbor's driveway. And they have two curb cuts. And it seems like everybody in the area has two curb cuts. And the examples that were given for the denial. Those, those businesses are, they're not impulse businesses. They're a bank or, you know, a dentist's office or whatever. So people go to those. They know how to get there. They figure it out. So we, we just, there's not enough room for us to maintain that separation. And just for our understanding, we pulled up the Georgia DOT standards for driveway separation for 35 mile an hour road speed limit. We're only 150 feet. So we're not sure, we don't have enough frontage, obviously, to do the 245 as recommended. We would be on our neighbor's property, obviously, if we did that. So that, that's another, you know, reason why we feel like we should, uh, be able to leave the curb cut. We also did inquire about crash data. There was no crash data at that inner, at that particular driveway. So we don't feel like it's an unsafe condition right now. People who, if the signal's backed up, those people are not going to try to turn left out there. Or turn left into it, into the project. So the, the driveway, from our standpoint, it functions adequately and safely today. We're not changing the use of the, you know, if this was a, an abandoned gas station or something, and we're going to go and put some high traffic volume store here. I could see there being an issue potentially with people, you know, a lot of extra traffic, but we're not changing the traffic pattern or the amount of traffic that would be coming into the project. So again, we've placed the driveway right in the middle of our project. We don't know where else to put it because we're, you know, we can't be too close to the neighbor's driveway. And we can't be too close to the intersection. So our hardship is, it's just physically not enough room there. And if we don't have that curb cut, the business will not thrive. So that, that's, you know, so that, that's kind of where, that's our position. And again, I think we talked about the traffic. You know, we're going to increase, if somebody wants to come to this restaurant, they're going to have to go through the intersection and turn right. As opposed to turning right before the intersection. It's going to just plug up the intersection.
Also like to point out that the neighbor's property, their driveway is actually right on their property line. Which is creating the, uh, the distance issue for the driveway while ours is centered on our property line. So it would make more sense to, in the future of the neighbor's property, to have them actually center a single driveway on their property to. Get the required distance. And there were also multiple properties all up and down this road that have multiple curb cuts. And we have only just one single curb cut.
Just to kind of, uh, just to talk through the, the site plan and the business case here. So just to start with, the zoning staff does not support the approval. That's clear. You've read the report and that's to be expected. I mean, they're doing their job. Uh, and, and you're doing a job of making sure that. The spirit of the code is, is followed and that if there is a variance, there's a hardship or a need. Or, uh, you know, a practical difficulty in applying the code correctly. So I think what we're trying to outline here is the fact that. We're, we are, by redeveloping this site and bringing it up to modern standards internally, we're pulling more traffic off of the street. The curb cut that is in, uh, you know, under review is essentially a write-in, write-out. And we're, when we're open to, as you'll see, there's a pork chop on there. There's, it's, it's got an internal component to the site plan. We'll signage it. We'll work with staff to detail it that way. But write-in, write-out, release traffic on the street. So I think, you know, what they're not recognizing in the staff review is that the internal structure of the site. Plus the traffic that's coming off of the street is actually safer than leaving it the way it is. Or closing it off and pushing all of that traffic to the, to the, to the side street. If you push all the traffic that wants to come into our site, into that side street, it's going to be a congested area and there is going to be more accidents over there. Because accidents, as we know, happen under two major conditions. If you listen to traffic advisors, they say that it's low volume and high speed. That's a condition. And then high volume and low speed, those are when accidents happen. And so if you are going to push everyone to that side street, you're going to have more accidents and more congestion and more frustration. And so when that happens, even on the front and on the side light, both roads, because it'll work its way around the corner. When that happens, that is a detriment to public safety because there will be accidents. Over time, you want more pedestrian traffic flow. And if it is congested, uh, safety vehicles won't be able to get through. So there are some, some real circulation issues there. The other thing I want to address is. Uh, staff brought up that it's, our curb cut is close to the intersection. And, and when that becomes a problem. And, and when that becomes a problem is when you're on the far side of the light. So if you can imagine, if there is a curb cut that's really close to a light. After you pass through the intersection. People are. Sorry to say it these days, but they're on their phone. They're doing other things. They're distracted and it's, it's amplified as they go through the light because they've, they've got the green light. They're going. And so if the curb cut is past that, that becomes an accident zone. If the curb cut is before the light. It's less of a factor because people are looking at the light and they're maintaining distances up into that light. So. As I've been educated over the years on this, a near and far curb cut to a light. Can either make or break a site and it can either make or break accidents. So I think it's important just to talk about. You know, the overall site consideration as compared to other sites along that corridor. If, as, as that corridors redeveloped and I see that's a master plan here. If everyone went down to a single curb cut on that corridor and had the same standard that we did in the middle of the site, one curb cut middle of the site. You do reach that 250, 245 foot between curb cuts. And so if it's a master plan and everyone's held to that same standard over time, you meet your goals. But as it stands right now, again, you know, we are, we're just under the 150 that the DOT, Georgia State DOT recommends at that speed. So it is an unsafe condition. It's more of a, a master planning. And if you're looking at it from a master plan, you really have to look at it and say. Over time, we want everyone to comply. So, and then for us, I mean, staff even, I think suggested in their. In their rebuttal to our submittal was that, you know, we should just get a, an interconnectivity with the parcel next to us. I mean. If you're into real estate and, and leases and neighbor situations, you realize that that's kind of a naive statement. It's, I mean, we can't force someone to connect to us, especially a big bank like that. Also, as we compare to that bank next door, brick and mortar banks aren't getting a ton of business like they used to in the past. So. You know, that, that kind of changes the, the dynamics of any unsafe condition. So. If we don't get approval to the curb cut in this variance, and I don't mean this in a. Threatening way. It's just a practical matter that we probably won't move forward with the plans to, to do anything at the store. We do need to maintain that curb cut. In order to, you know, keep the flow into our business. Otherwise we become an island on that road and no one can really access us. And as the, the cars will pile up on the side road, no one's going to even attempt to come and visit us. So it'll, it'll, we'll be lost in the, in the melee. And so, you know, strict application of the code denial. Really results in an undue hardship on a curb cut that we already have. And it's not really created. This request wasn't created by us. Denial of the variance holds the property to standard not attainable or consistent in the zoning area. And will unreasonably prevent the use of the property for its intended permitted use and purpose. Circumstances are unique to the property based on the use and age of the original layout. And approving all the variances will increase traffic safety and public safety. And in approval, the spirit of the ordinance is deserved. And preserved for compliance over time as neighboring parcels are held at the same standard and improved. And so we think we're doing a good thing. We think we're doing a better job in this. Reworking of the site plan and making it more safe. Situation for traffic and pedestrians. And. We think over time that that corridor will improve as people seek to do the same thing we are. We also know that once someone doesn't. A project like this, it really becomes a domino effect. So if we improve this store, other folks will want to improve. Other folks will come in and, and comply to a single curb cut standard. And, and then I think everyone will meet their aims. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'd ask if anybody else wants to speak in favor. I think we're out of time, but if there's anybody, I'll allow it. If anybody else wants to speak in favor. My name is Bob LaSalle. I'm at 4894 Summerford Drive. I am the current president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association, but just speaking for myself tonight. It's not like they're asking for a new curb cut. It's the existing curb cut. And like Brian said, if it comes down to the fact that, okay, it makes no sense. To build a new restaurant if that curb cut can't remain, well. I, I don't, I don't see how that's bettering the community. At the end of the day, let's add value to the community. And a brand new Burger King at that spot certainly would add some value. And as Brian mentioned, and I, I don't recall a whole lot of accidents in that area. I recall that area being very safe. I don't see where there's an issue with that. Sometimes you have to draw outside the lines to do what's best for the community and. I see no reason why that existing curb cut shouldn't remain like it is. And let's get a new Burger King for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Hi, my name's Vicki and I live on Summerford Drive currently. I did live in Georgetown off of Old Spring House Lane for five years when I first moved to Dunwoody and. You know, I certainly, just to kind of reiterate what everyone else has said around safety, I commute past that restaurant every day. Again, lived there for five years prior to moving to my current house in Dunwoody and have never witnessed any accidents at that location. Being a working mom of two kids, if I'm going to choose to frequent a fast food location, which we don't have very many. I want quick access. Otherwise, why would I even go into a fast food restaurant? So for me, my commute is passing there and certainly when I live there. Coming from the interstate, which does drive traffic and affect sales. You know, I'm going to go into the front entrance and when I leave and exit to go home, I'm, I'm turning right. So. I only use that entrance for quick access in and quick access out. If I'm choosing to turn left to go to the interstate. I go out the side, you know, to turn left at the light, which I think many people do. Hence the reason I don't think there's many accidents there. So I just wanted to make those couple of points. Being a resident for over 20 years. And again, not having many options for fast food that, you know, I wanted to raise those points. Because certainly I've, you know, been part of the community and I certainly would love to see it updated. And us have a nice restaurant that would invite, you know, community members, but also customers that are traveling through Dunwoody as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Oh, is there one more? Okay.
My name's Cole Cooper. I live at 4900 Millbrook Drive in, here in Dunwoody. I not only live there, I actually grew up in Dunwoody. I've lived here my whole life. I want to agree with what Bob and Vicki said just now. I pass by that Burger King every single day. I grew up eating at that Burger King. I think we can all agree. It's kind of run down, a little tired. I think Dunwoody has a few buildings that are a little rundown and tired. I feel that, you know, if, if they're not going to do this, this remodel or build due to a curb cut that they already have, I personally feel that's wrong. I mean, we, we all want to see this community thrive and grow and we all want to see it become the community that we, we all know it can be, right? And I know that they're putting this master Georgetown plan to do that, but I think a rundown Burger King is not going to really help that. So. Like I said, that's all I got to say, but I feel like that a new Burger King will really, you know, help the community and I think we should definitely approve there. So.
Thanks, Cole. All right, we'll close the. Well, we need an opposite. Yeah. Anybody in opposition? I didn't see anybody else left. That's all right. No one in opposition? All right. We'll close the public comment section. Board, questions, thoughts?
I mean, there's a lot to unpack. A few things. I think it's worth mentioning that just because you haven't seen an accident or heard of one, doesn't mean they don't happen. I mean. I grew up in tornado alley. I've never seen a tornado, right? Doesn't mean it's, that tornadoes don't happen there. So just want to make that general comment. I, I personally think it is a very unsafe area. That whole area is terrible. That's why we have a master plan. That's why the city's come up with one. Granted, I personally would like to see that go on, have happened a lot sooner than it has, but that's just due process, what have you. That's just how things go sometimes. I haven't also heard anyone address, everyone's talked about safety in terms of cars. No one, not a single person has talked about safety in terms of, of really pedestrian or multimodal or, or bicycling and things like that. And. As everyone knows, our community, we are definitely striving to got to kind of get better at that. So the curb cut thing doesn't, I didn't really hear a lot of chatter about that in respect to safety for that respect. You know, I certainly am pro-business. I want to see, you know, our area regentrified in terms of, you know. Fixing up old seventies shopping centers and, you know, as a gentleman over here mentioned, the village is like, you know, case study for that, right? But. And those things take time too. And there's a lot of variables that come into play there. So the biggest thing though, to me personally is we have a master plan. It's not necessarily set in stone or anything like that, but. My biggest fear is that we put the cart in front of the horse and I don't, I think it's just too. I'm not an expert in this area. That's just why I would refer to, you know, city and, and public works and all that about. The safety and health and welfare of our residents and, and visitors that come through that area. And I think it's just, we're, you know, kind of delivering an ultimatum, so to speak. It's just saying, hey, we're not going to redevelop this property because of one curb cut. It's the same exact argument the other gentleman's using for saying, well, we shouldn't let it come down to the curb cut. I mean, there's two sides to that coin. So. I encourage us to have that fruitful discussion in that regard.
I had a question about when the property was actually purchased. Was it purchased? While there was a 245 foot difference between driveways? I mean, was that, when you purchased the property, was that known?
I, I don't think that's, anything about the site has changed since we purchased it. And, and it's a Burger King corporate owned site. They own the land. And so we're their tenant. So traditionally they don't let go of properties. So.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll be a branded store for, you know, and then to, to, to address your, your pedestrian concern. What we do as part of a rebuild is make it fully ADA compliant, which includes sidewalks and, and streetscaping and everything. So. We'll comply to that. I don't think that was addressed because it wasn't identified as the variance issue, you know, if you will. And so that's important to us. We, we do a certification on every single store. So when it's done, it's 100% ADA compliant from the bathrooms to the back room, all the way out to the parking spaces. And then access to an ADA compliant sidewalk. So. You know, in the absence of any data, we think that this is going to make it safer. And again, the, the city's position is. They look at the streets and the curb cuts. They're not really, again, my point, major part of my point was. They're not looking at pulling the building and repositioning the building on the site and what that does to internal traffic flow. The amount of traffic that's going to be relieved on the streets. If you don't do that, it's going to be amplified on the street. So it's really like a pressure valve. So that's, that's kind of the difference.
I had one quick, one more question for you. No, that's fine. Did you ever speak with the bank?
We, we did not speak with the bank, but we'd be happy to, but. It would be right into their drive-through, right at the, at the entrance of their drive-through. And I can tell you, if I was the bank, I wouldn't approve that.
I have a question for the city, the city, please. Madeline. Two questions, well, maybe three actually. Okay. So we all know that Shandly Dunwoody is going through this great. We're tearing, we're getting the trees down. So, but that stops at that intersection. Is that correct? The, all the improvements or is it going to go all the way to 285? You know, I'm talking about, so the Shandly Dunwoody.
The streetscape improvement?
The streetscape. It's currently under construction.
It goes past this property and it does, I think, go down to 285. It's, it's through the whole of Shandly.
Right. But that's part of the scope that they're working on right now. The city phasing it in, because right now they're really just tearing down the trees. Which would be north of this intersection. Would everyone agree, right? Everybody nod their head. That's where all the trees are coming down. So tell me what's going to happen. Is there a timeline for when it's going to, everything's going to start happening the other side of it, which would include this property?
I personally don't have the timeline. Public Works. Handles all of that phasing, community development separate. We're more on the private property side. They handle the right of way. And unfortunately, Michael Smith wasn't able to make it this evening. So. I guess I don't have all that technical.
The reason I bring it up, because I do appreciate the master plan for the city. I, I would love for every, because I believe the Ashford Dunwoody corridor, we've worked on some on that because they did mandate that you. The curb cut, there's very few. You have to get down a road and then behind buildings. So all the restaurants and the, and commercial is up to the street. Well, that's not what's happening here. We didn't ask Burger King or the, whoever the tenant of this property to move the proper, the building. To the street, which forces you to then have to enter behind, on the side street. This master plan just says, we'd like it to be walk, we'd like it to be more pedestrian and modal friendly. But we're not in for, we're not going to the extent of the perimeter.
It, it doesn't have a form-based code like primary center or Dunwoody Village.
Right. I just want everyone to be clear that, because, because if you think about it, yeah, we literally, the city would have to build a road behind for these, these, all these, you know, retail and business establishments to have another access point. So going forward, if we. As it's been brought out, if two buildings, say, say the gas stations or maybe that gas station, but there's like a hairdresser. If they decide to change and maybe they only have one curb cut, but are we going to really, so the mandate of the curb cut is. The code is 245 feet from. Each end of your property?
So there's required, it's the spacing between the driveways.
The driveways has to be 245 feet or a street, or a street, right? Because that's considered a drive.
And we. Guarantee that every individual property has access to their parcel. But like I said, not, we don't guarantee access to a specific street.
Yeah, I understand. But yeah. So if the next parcel of land doesn't have, has a shorter footage, front or frontal, then they'll have to, you'll have to grant them.
We can't require them to close off the only curb cut access to their property.
But you could close a second curb cut to come up to standards, kind of like.
They have multiple curbs. We can require them to.
Right. I understand that. I guess I was like SunTrust next door is whatever. They have multiple. So if SunTrust ever decides to do any, any renovation. They would have to come up to new standards.
If they can't meet the driveway spacing requirements, that's when we would enforce the management plan.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I would think that the, the ones, current tenants that have multiple street cuts, we don't need that, right? That whole area is congested. It's ridiculous. But, you know. Eliminating a current existing curb cut for a business, I, I do have a little bit of a problem with that. I, I totally appreciate the plan there and it needs to be done. A couple of things. And the African suggested it may be, it may be a moot point. So I think it's the way it's going to be used anyways, but if it's a right turn in only. So people can't turn left into that. Might be one small remedy. I don't think anybody's going to turn left into there anyways. They're going to do it the side street, but it's probably worth noting that we could make it, make it a right turn only. And then I would think that the, anybody else, as they redevelop, like you say, it's kind of sequential as you go along and we develop and whatever, whatever. If they have multiple. Multiple driveways, then that could be remedied at that point. But taking away an existing one is, is, I think, a little punitive. Although I do think that there's probably a lot more local traffic into that than 25. I think there's, it's going to be an impact for sure. And a punitive impact at that, although I think it might be a little overplayed on the, on the actual 25 traffic that comes in there. But. So I, I do think it's a little punitive. I love the streetscape. I think that's got to be, it's a must. That area needs to be cleaned up. And this could actually be. Kind of a signature piece of that, that Renaissance a little bit.
And yeah, wait, because we don't know the plan. We don't know what the intersection improvement's going to be. And we've seen how the city is doing a better job of improving our intersections where we have more. Less stack up, you know, more, more double lanes that have a longer, a longer left turn stack, right turn stack. So it sounds like they're going to do a better job, which would. Allow people, they want to take that right turn. They're not stuck behind people that have inadvertently gotten in the left-hand lane that's not a lane. inadvertently gotten in the left-hand lane that's not a lane.
So Dunwoody Park is that road that's right next to your property, right on the side there, is that correct? Okay, and is there a current curb cut there to go left if you're heading, is that north? It's a straight and straight out, okay. So it's kind of one of those things, still making the best use of the property as it's current state, I mean, ideally, it would be great from a time, it's a matter of timing, right? Ideally, the master plan would be further along, but you know, you can't.
And that's why I asked the question about the cityscape, because I want to have a view, I want to kind of get an idea what that's supposed to look like. Um, but it doesn't look like it's going to be, it's not taking away curb cuts from anybody. Thank you.
Anyone?
I, um, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the request for a variance from section sixteen dash two seventeen to reduce the minimum required driveway spacing from two forty-five to one twenty-six to allow an existing curb cut on Shandly Dunwoody to remain.
Can I hear a second?
Second?
Can I amend the motion?
You may.
I would like to amend the motion to include the condition of a right-in, right-out at that curb cut on Shandly Dunwoody.
I will second that.
Okay.
Um, yes.
You're making attention out of working with the staff.
Yes. Right, of course, yes, oh, yes, yeah. Right, right, so we will amend it for the second time. The conditions below are right-in, right-out, um, condition, working with the staff for final approval.
I second.
Can we have a first and a second? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
No opposed, it passes. Yeah. Uh, it's true, sure. Any other business, uh, board? Anybody, uh, want to talk about other business? Nothing? Public comment, I think we had suspicion of that. Bob, I want to make some more public comment, okay? I like it. Uh, board, any comment? Good, thank you. All right, we adjourn.